...out of the practice session, start that, so we can start right on time. For board members, as a reminder, all your microphones are turned off when you're ready to speak, just please turn your microphone on, they're very close to your mouth, definitely helps with the sound for those that are in the audience, as well as those that are participating through the remote meeting link on Zoom. Mr. Refrere, as soon as you see a couple people logging in, if you give me a thumbs up, then we will get started. Okay? Dr. Morty, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 841-4286-7069, and the required password is 094947. I'll order Mr. Bleecker.
Your call for tonight's meeting, Ms. DeVenero.
Here.
Mr. DeSilva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmorsky.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Sukon.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
And Dr. Morty.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda, this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on February 16, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Our salute, Ms. DeVenero, would you plead us in our spirit? By doing the flag of the hand of space of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion at this time, we do have to take an executive session at this point, so I need a motion to recess to executive. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Kizmorsky. We're going to say about 15 to 20 minutes, if there's anything beyond that, we will come back out then. Thank you very much. No, that was what I listed, right?
Very cool.
Yeah, it's okay. I'll write down. Yeah. Thank you. No problem.[196.12][196.12]
All right, I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Kizmerski and second by Mr. De Silva. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Now I need a motion to open to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, I need a motion to close to the public. Mr. Kizmerski and Mr. Denise, second. All right, superintendent's report, Dr. Di Toro.
Yes, thank you. I have three items just to bring up. The first, as stated in the letter that was sent out last week effective with the governor's announcement, the Mawa Public Schools II will not now make masking optional beginning March 7th. This announcement is aligned with the responses received from our school community survey. I know there have been a number of requests along the lines of what did data was from the school survey, so allow me a couple of minutes to share that. We had three, over 3,000 responses to our survey. Overall, sixty point, sixty-six point six percent of the responses said yes, we are comfortable moving to a masking optional decision. Of the 3,000 responses, six, over 1,600 of those responses were parents. Sixty-seven percent of those responses said that they were comfortable going masking optional. Again, out of the 3,000 responses, 973 of those responses were students. Seventy-two percent of the students said that they were comfortable going masking optional. Again, out of the 3,000 responses, 359 of the students, now remember, the sixth through 12th grade students were surveyed. I'm sorry, that was for the students. For the staff, we had 359 responses. Fifty-five percent of those responses were in favor of masking optional. You have any questions about the results?
Were those somewhat in line with the previous survey?
The, overall, they were very much in line with the previous survey data. When you start to go break out into the specific groups, there wasn't much shifting either. So overall, they were, they were very much aligned.
Ms. Cal?
Yes.
On the survey, was there just one question?
Correct.
Whether or not?
Correct. Now, I know this is a shift in practice, but I'm confident that we're ready for this. With speaking to the medical professionals, because again, it wasn't, the survey was not the sole indicator of the decision. As we have done in the past, we lean on the advice of our medical professionals, points such as the infection rates declining, increased access to vaccination, symptoms changing over the course of the pandemic, these were all topics that we discussed which supported the decision that we made. We know that this shift creates emotional responses from both sides. We expect that everyone is going to be respectful of individual choice and are encouraged about the opportunity to move forward. Another important piece that I would like to share with the board, we had an incident last week at Ramapo Ridge, and I feel like it's important to share some details about the event that took place. Ramapo Ridge received information that there was a threat of violence on the school. We reported this information to the Mawa Police Department and sent the school into a modified lockdown. The Mawa Police Department were on the scene and present both inside of the school and outside of the school. During that time, we spoke to a number of students to gather information while also working with the prosecutor's office as well as a social media outlet to obtain information about the creator of the account. As the time went on, we made sure that the students in the building were able to access the bathrooms as well as circulate through lunch while being escorted by staff. We also communicated to the parents via email. Thankfully, we were able to identify the source of the post prior to dismissal. We do not take these situations lightly and are working at the school level as well as the police to address this matter. There have been requests for information regarding what will be done to the person who created the post. Due to the fact that this is a juvenile matter, we are not at liberty to discuss any more details. We thank the Mawa Police Department, the Ramapo Ridge Administration, and Ramapo Ridge staff for working with us during this difficult time. Lastly, the students were absolutely incredible during this difficult time, which allowed us to focus our intention on resolving this issue. We know that these events can be stressful for all, and because of this, the Ramapo Ridge Guidance Department as well as Child Study have been working with staff to support any student that is in need. Let's end on a good note here. I'm very excited to share this with the board. This is the grand opening for the Joyce Kilmer School Innovation Lab. This is a long time coming. I know that Dr. Bowie and his team have been working very hard to prepare the space. We are very grateful to the Board of Education for allowing us to, to build this space. We're also very grateful for our Technology Department that's working simultaneously with Building Administration. This space is really going to allow us to continue our efforts in building thinkers throughout our school district, K through 12th. We've done so much at the high school level. We've brought it down to the middle school level in our Encore programs. This is the next logical step in building that streamlined approach of allowing our students to gradually get to that place of being the ultimate thinkers at the high school level. Steam, maker space, coding, all the things that we really want our students to experience can happen in this space and the curriculum that's, that has been developed and the staff that's going to lead it, I think is going to take the whole, the school to a whole different novel. So this is going to be a grand opening for our board members. Please mark your calendar, February 24th at 10 o'clock if you are interested, board. If you can please RSVP to Nancy and she will make sure that she makes the proper accommodations. But again, February 24th, 10 o'clock, we are extremely excited about this new opportunity for Joyce Kilmer School.
Great, thank you, Dr. Di Toro. Mr. Bleecker, Business Administrator, report.
Thank you. No report this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Fair, no report.
Yes, first, I'd like to bring to your attention the, there are a few asterisks on this evening's agenda under new business, 18A, 18V, 18W, and 18CC. They're connected to last minute leaves of absences that will require based on timeline to be on the agenda as well as last minute additions to the volunteer lists. Additionally, at your places, you have our registration letter for incoming kindergarteners. As you know, over the course of the last few years, we've centralized this process. While our registration process for kindergarteners can be done entirely online, we wanted to keep in tact the opportunity for new parents to the district or parents with children just entering kindergarten to be able to be here in person to register their child in case they have any questions with the building principal or the building secretary. So we've centralized the process. It will take place at the Thunderbird Think Tank as we had done over the last two years. So that will continue and it's set to take place on March 24th. That letter has been sent out with parents' opportunities to sign up through a Google form for a reserved slot of time to meet with the building. So that's happening. Our second piece is, as we've been sharing with the board, as we make some inroads or successful moves forward with our Thunderbird Partnership Program, we promised the board that we would apprise them of any updates. We just recently met through a connection that we made with a Mawa parent. She was kind enough to connect us with five local CEOs who also happened to be parents in our district. So we were able to Zoom with all of them despite their busy schedules. They gave us some of their time, which was really awesome. And Central Office used this opportunity to gain insight into how our program can enter into these workplaces either through any of our already established partnerships or through potential internship or job shadowing programs for our high schoolers. So not only did we view this experience as an opportunity to further our program, we really gained some serious insights from these CEOs or leaders in their, in their businesses on recommendations or suggestions on how we can do this even better in the future. So we're, we're really thankful to those CEOs and we'll keep you updated in terms of what that traction looks like because we're very excited. The next piece is we have two retirements on our agenda. Mrs. Miriam Lozansky, who has served as our supervisory district for the last 16 years. Most recently, Mrs. Lozansky has provided oversight of our World Language Department, grades six through 12, along with our Performing Arts and Visual Arts Departments, grades nine through 12. Mrs. Lozansky has also supervised our K-12 ESL program. While Mrs. Lozansky has been defined as supportive and kind, she has also shared a passion for language acquisition learning and in most recent years has worked with our department to institute or seal a bilingual program to our high school students and has made significant progress in working towards making our World Language, World Language Department and program a model program based on a state approval in the coming years. We wish Mimi all the best in being with her family and husband in her retirement. Mimi expressed most excitement in spending quality time with her daughters and grandchildren who are out of state once retirement arrives. So we wish her all the best. Last piece is Mrs. Debbie McGuire. She's a school nurse in our district and has been for the past 28 years. Not only did Mrs. McGuire assist in opening Lenape Meadows School in its first year of opening, but she has spent 27 of those 28 years at Betsy Ross School. Mrs. McGuire is known to handle all student situations, whether trivial or serious, with a calm, soothing manner. Her previous administrators have referenced those children who would seek out Mrs. McGuire to have their tooth pulled by her because, quote, "It didn't hurt so bad when she did." Her colleagues know Mrs. McGuire to be the caregiver, obviously, who cares for her coworkers and friends, but they also know Debbie for her sense of humor. Often, April Fool's Day is one where Debbie will play pranks on her Betsy Ross School coworkers. And when I sat down with Debbie recently, she spoke many fond memories in district. She's actually very excited about where the district is headed. And when I asked her what was next, she wasn't quite sure, but she said she would be busy with her local women's clubs as well as her Irish dancing group. Mrs. McGuire was and is considered the heart of Betsy Ross School and she will be Miss Brayton. That's my report. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fair. All right, we move on to my report. I have a few things. One, I just want to provide a comment on the modified lockdown that took place on the week. I just want our community and parents to know that the executive committee was kept abreast of the situation and the actions that were taken, and the full board was informed as the day progressed. Information sharing and open communication is a priority as time permits. We must have ongoing trust and provide support to our administrative team, building leadership, teachers, and support staff. We know as a board that those involved acted with immediacy, took information seriously, brought in the necessary resources very promptly like the Mawa Police Department, and resolved the situation through the course of the day while, most importantly, maintaining the emotional and physical safety of all students and staff in the building. We thank them, we thank the Mawa Police Department for handling this situation with the utmost professionalism and genuine concern. I also just want to, I think, highlight, you know, there was, you know, something going on before. We used to talk about it all the time. We don't talk about it anymore as much, but if you see something, please say something. This is to students, teachers, our staff, our community. It's been a while, maybe COVID, remote learning, but I think it's a good reminder and I think it's a very important conversation to have with your children and as a family. Oh, okay. All right, next, some good news. Congratulations to Courtney Corella and our FPS students. The following, and FPS is future problem solving, the following Ramapo Ridge Middle School students earned invitations to the New Jersey Future Problem Solving State Bowl by placing within the top three of our school and top 10 in the state division. Now, I'm going to apologize in advance if I mispronounce a name. I grew up with a very difficult last name in rural Virginia and it was pretty much tortured most days. So again, I apologize. In the junior division, we have three teams. One is Charlotte Ferguson, Dylan Kloster, Leona Scala, and Rishi Desai. Then we have Ayann Katib, Divya Dhrumala, Lauren Prank, and Thomas Antonelli. Then we have Ashini Desai, Avish Ramka, Elina Gaynulina, and Lucas Walsh. In the middle division, these are the following teams. We have Cole Baruta, Casey Pieklo, Nisha Padibandla, and Ryan Sumner. Then we have Avani Singh, Ewan Kim, Skanda Bharat Kumar, Lysia Lin. And then last team, we have Alok Patak, Andrew Liu, Devin Stromer, and Jennifer Pipolovic. In the individual middle division, middle school division, we have Abby Murphy. So congratulations to all participating students. The state bowl will be held online on March 4th, 2022. Winners will receive an invitation to the international competition in June. And from Joyce Kilmer School, we have congratulations to the following students who will be competing in the 35th Annual Spelling Bee on February 28th, 7:00 PM in Ramsey. The following students are Andre Lennox, Darren Dimmerboss, Sidney Forman, Eli Creely, Chloe Brunetto, John Hughes, Jasmine Porter, Shriya Ugerwal, Jade Bellara, Timothy Liu, Sora Yun, and Giacomo Faltis. Again, congratulations and good luck in Ramsey. All right, that's all I have. Let's move on to board committee reports. Any board committee reports? Mr. Copeland, committee relations.
All right, I'm not sure if this is working, but I don't know if I need it. Community quarter, so this month is Black History Month. It's celebrated during the month of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Couple fun facts, this is for Mr. Trivia over here. Rebecca Lee Crumpler graduated from the New England Female Medical College in 1860 with her MD, making her the first Black woman to become a doctor of medicine in the United States. When Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was originally drafting his "I Have a Dream" speech, the dream language was considered but ultimately edited out. He was only allowed five minutes to speak and he didn't think he'd have enough time to fit those words in. When he arrived at the march that morning, Dr. King was disappointed at the number, at the numbers the media was reporting, only about 25,000 had showed up to protest. But by the time he reached the Lincoln Memorial, the numbers had swelled, inspiring Dr. King to suddenly change his speech and include the line that was ultimately made history. We'd like to wish everyone that celebrates the Lunar New Year a very healthy and prosperous year of the Water Tiger. President's Day is coming up Monday. Although the holidays most, most of the time referred to as President's Day, the observed federal holiday is officially called Washington's Birthday. Washington's Birthday is observed on February 22nd, but he was actually born on February 11th, 1731. When he was born, the Julian calendar was in use. During Washington's lifetime, people in Great Britain and America switched the official calendar system from the Julian to the Gregorian. As a result, people born before 1752 were told to add 11 days to their birthdays. Those, those born between January 1 and March 25th, as Washington was, also had to add one year to be in sync with the new calendar. So by the time Washington became president in 1789, he celebrated his birthday on February 22nd and listed his birthday as 1732. Keep that, that's going to be a trivia question at some point. Engineering Week is coming up, February 23rd to the 25th, which is next week, and we'll be celebrating it here in the district by connecting our elementary school students with our middle school program. Our K through 3 students will be working with the gifted and talented middle school kids, will be teaching various lessons that they actually wrote and presented based on engineering. Tomorrow's Random Acts of Kindness Day. It's pretty simple, just do a random act and pay it forward. We should be doing that every day if we can. Last, I want to, I'm going to end on a somber note a little bit. Recently, I saw on social media, Mawa lost a longtime member of our fire department, ex-chief Bruce Bergens. Chief Bergens was a firefighter for Mawa for 31 years and served in all fire officer positions up to departmental chief. Our deepest condolences go out to his family, his friends, and all the members in Mawa Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland, and I, I feel like maybe after, you know, several of your community corners could go on jeopardy with all the good trivia information you've provided. Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Gallo, from on financing facilities?
Yes. The financing facilities committee has met twice to begin the review of the budget process. We met first on February 9th, where we reviewed benefits and preliminary enrollment projections, debt service, and special revenue. Tonight, we met to discuss the personnel budget and certain personnel changes and programs associated with those changes. We also reviewed a variety of facility projects, some of which are related to our land review, some of which are sort of more mundane, but we are well on our way to putting together, well on our way to have reviewed most of the budget, and we'll have one more budget in early March. And there is a little complication with our budget this year because of a change in the schedule of the governor's announcement of state aid. So that may throw us a loop. Maybe we'll get more money, maybe we won't, but it will delay our budget process ever so slightly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. Anyone else? All right, I will report on instruction and curriculum. So, number one, under new business 17P, there is on the agenda curriculum writing. This is related to updates to the standards set forth by the Department of Education. This is in the areas of visual and performing arts and then kindergarten to fifth grade physical education and health. We did have a nice presentation this morning from Jennifer Golovaki and Courtney Corella that my colleague, Mr. Copeland, has covered and on his engineering week, so thank you to them. We then had an update from our instructional coaching staff, Dana Marciani, Jenny Hogan, and our K through 5 supervisor Natasha Carrera. Very exciting, I mean, they provided an update, they told us about the first cycle in October where there were non-tenured teachers who participated. Each classroom received twice weekly for three to four weeks. There were nine teachers in English Language Arts and seven in math. The thing that they noted that came up is that teachers actually wanted more consistency, so more time with them. They then moved into another residencies model, and that was started in November. This is open to all teachers and there was incredible teacher interest in that. Twenty-three teachers in English Language Arts and 21 in math participated, and this would involve the coaches going into the classroom every day for a week. There were pre-post meetings and then feedback to them. So in terms of some of the focuses that they're having, it's on small group instruction, problem-based learning, things like that. And it, it seems like it's, you know, very well received in schools. They also had a lab site that they did on February 10th. In English Language Arts, it was a reading workshop with a strategy group that was done with all second grade teachers in the district, and in math, they did something on guided math, and that was with all first grade teachers. So far, 85 K through 5 teachers have received coaching support and the feedback from teachers has been very positive. So really great program, very energetic individuals who are involved in the coaching and it's very impressive. Language Buddies, Mimi Lozansky, our World Language Supervisor, reported that the first Language Buddy session took place on Monday. This is between the honors Spanish eighth graders and the fifth graders. Teachers designed structured icebreakers for the first session that was done in English. The next session will be geared toward content in the target language. Again, kids and teachers both enjoyed it, it was a good social component, and it's a nice bridge between our J.K. students and Ramapo Ridge students. Mindful March is March 11th, Finding Common Ground, Pursuing Common Ground. There's information at SELday, S-E-L in capitals, day.org, and there'll be SEL moments throughout the day. Hackensack Meridian Health is also doing a six-part wellness series that is open to all staff, students, and parents. I think the first one is tomorrow evening. So again, this is, you know, stuff that is free, this is full access, so please take advantage of it. Parent Academy, on February 15th, there was a documentary called LIKE, L-I-K-E. This documentary explores the impact of social media on our lives and the effects of technology on the brain. There's another one coming up on February 22nd. The presentation focuses on understanding today's cannabis and implications on the adolescent brain and well-being. And again, a big shout out and thanks to the Mawa Municipal Alliance who continues to partner with us in bringing these very exciting programs to our district. Last, PD on Demand. So there was a January Professional Development Day and a repository for teachers to access. Peer-supported PD was created virtually so that they can access that at their, well, and that's all, that's all I have. All right, board member remarks? Any additional comments? Mr. De Silva?
I have a couple real quick. I want to expand on the, the FPS recording. Just congratulations to Ms. Corella and Ms. Hartigan Miller. We have six teams from Ramapo Ridge that will be in the FPS State Bowl and six teams from high school. So Mawa is going to have 12 teams in the competition, which is, which are pretty cool. On Saturday, the 5th, I went to my first winter guard competition in Saddle Brook, and I was lucky enough to sit with Mr. Pascal, who could explain to me what was going on. It was, it was really cool, it was way more complicated than it seems, but congratulations to Ms. Cavalier. But congratulations to Ms. Cavalier and Ms. Bodie, who, they did a fantastic job. The kids did a great job, everybody had a whole lot of fun. The coaches actually set up a session with one of the judges to come out and talk to the Winter Guard team, to give them some pointers and some tips and stuff. So they actually ended up with a very high score, but not so high as to get bumped up into the next classification, which is a good thing. But that was a really cool, really cool experience. And past Saturday, Sunday, I had the opportunity to, which something, growing up in Mala, I've never been in the caboose or the train station. So I had the opportunity to do that this Sunday. And I would recommend that everybody who has the opportunity go do it, because it is super cool, especially some of the things that they have in the train station. But the caboose itself is really neat, there's a lot of history. The docents from the Mala Museum really know, not just the history of the caboose itself and the train station, but the history of the area between the AVAX plant and just kind of, as Mala grew, it's really, really a cool, cool experience. They're looking to start raising money to put a roof over the caboose so we can get that tarp off of there, which would be really cool. So looking to raise some money, looking to build some awareness. I mean, it might even be a cool project for one of our marketing classes or something to reach out and help them build awareness within the community. And, you know, it's a really cool resource that, you know, I don't think we take advantage of as much as we should. So, cool stuff.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. And let me also thank Ms. Hartigan-Miller, thank you for noting that. Any other board member remarks? Mr. Copeland?
Real quick, we've had some weather over the last several weeks, and I just wanted to throw a big thank you out to Kyle, Greg, and everyone at the Buildings and Browns crew. Some of this weather has hit over the weekend, and as we all know, our community uses our facilities over the weekend. And there was never a hiccup, there was never a stop. We were never told we couldn't use the facilities, and that was because of our great, great crew. So Kyle, thank you, please pass that on to everyone involved. The parking lots were clear, the sidewalks were shoveled, and the salt was put down. It was a very safe environment, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to, oh, Mr. Gallo, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you.
About a year ago, I joined the Mala Emergencies Medical Services as an auxiliary member. And at the January business meeting, there were two Mala high school students who became members, active ambulance corps members. And they also had just had their officers' elections. Many of the newer officers of MEMS are Mala high school graduates. So you see, in the meetings by Zoom, so you see all these young faces of these very serious, yet good-spirited Mala young people who are serving our community in a very, very important service. For the last two months, in December and January, MEMS experienced their highest call rates in the history of the organization. They were well over 170 calls each month. And the fact that we have young people from our high school and we have leadership from our high school, not quite as senior as our class of 93 members, but who are contributing to doing this community service for our town is very, very, it's very heartening for me to see that these volunteer services continue in our town and providing, obviously, a very important service. So I just wanted to highlight their contribution to the, you know, that Mala High School continues to contribute to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo, to you and your volunteer ambulance corps members. Oh, I'm just now throwing things, it's, I think everyone, in case you don't know the name, Prima Mortia, I don't need the other thing. Okay, let's go on to Old Business. Anybody else, Old Business? Do I have a motion on Old Business A? Mr. Denise, and a second by Mr. Copeland. Mr. Bleecker?
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Abstained.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Secon?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes. All right, now let's take New Business A through Z. Do I have a motion? Mr. Kizmarski, second by Ms. Secon. Any discussion, conversation about that?
I, just real quick, would like to point out how happy I am to see the Frost Valley trips on this agenda. While it's only for a day, for each class, it's still a start, just back to some normalcy. As stated before the meeting, I would like to see this return through the fall for an overnight trip for us, if that makes sense.
So noted, Mr. Kizmarski, thank you. Any other conversation and discussion? Okay, Mr. Bleecker?
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on items 17A and B, I am abstaining on check 105606, 105663, 105754, and 105814. Yes on all items other than this.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Secon?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes on all, but I'm abstaining on checks number 105616, 105674, and 105822.
Thank you. And Dr. Morty?
Yes. All right, New Business Personnel. This is A through, I think we're at Z again, A through Z, kept that consistent, okay? Oh, it's CC, because there were some additions. Thank you, Dr. Fair, for, no, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, A through CC, do I have a motion? Any, okay, Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Copeland. Anyone want to say anything? Are we, okay?
Actually, on Kevin McGuire's retirement, she was one of the first people we had in that staff highlight program we had. And I would look forward to eventually bringing that back at some point. I'd like that, she was a great, she was well-presented in that program. She was a good ambassador to get the thing rolling. And I wish her, obviously, great success in her retirement, but, you know, if we can bring her back, our staff recognition program back.
I get all sorts of hints in this meeting. Okay. All right, Mr. Bleecker?
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes, and I'd like to congratulate both of our retirees, and wish them both a very long and happy and productive retirement. And we're probably have a little bit of budget left over. We're buying a few peppermints. How do I know? And I'd like to, I'd also like to thank our volunteers. And yes?
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Secon?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and I'd also like to thank all of our volunteers.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes, and again, thank you for years of service of our retirees. Very much appreciative of all you've given to the district. And yes. All right, public questions or comment? Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. Note, the section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Gallo. Okay, we are open to the public. Okay, Mr. Bleecker?
Hi, good evening, Danielle Ryan, 22 Riverview Terrace. I wanted to start with a thank you. I know the masks being optional now, it's a step in the right direction. So I know I've been hearing a lot talking about them, so I figured I'd come and say thanks for that. There is still a lot more that needs to be done, and I just have some notes for myself. One of the things I've seen on social media stating that now people like me will need to find another hobby, people like me being people that continue coming here even when it seems fruitless. I don't need another hobby. I'm here in the best interest of my children, and masks being optional is a great first step, but there's a lot more to be done. From there, I wanted to mention, because I had asked a few times about transmission within the school, because I know that's one of the next steps, hopefully, is gonna be getting rid of the close contact, quarantine being required. I know you can't give me a number on how many cases have been within the school. Ho-HoKus is a number I can go by, because they did give it out, and they have less. I know we're, obviously, a bunch bigger school system, but Ho-HoKus had 132 confirmed cases, 104 close contacts had to be quarantined because of this, and zero of those close contacts became COVID-positive. So although for some reason we're unable to do that here, I'm finding out what that number's gonna be. That's just over 100 kids whose education is...
Can I just respond to that? Because this is the third time you've brought it up.
Yeah, it is.
And it's really because there are two transmissions that are listed on our website or determined by an epidemiologist, who's the only person who can identify based on the contact tracing. So we do the contact tracing, we submit all of that information to the state, and they say to us whether an outbreak took place or an absolute transmission took place. We don't have an epidemiologist on-site to say with absolution that a transmission took place on-site here.
Okay, but the nurse is doing close contact tracing, correct? That's what the nurse is doing. If any of those kids that have to be sent home are found to be positive, that's, that would be somebody that tested positive from being, you know, that one of the kids that were quarantined that tested positive. So that's how it's done. I don't know why there's, like, why we can't get a straight answer.
Because there's a lot of different variables that you're not taking into account. So when somebody is deemed to close contact, and then they were tested positive, there's also variables that happen outside of school that we can't determine with absolute certainty that, did they get it from their brother or sister or aunt and uncle that is also positive? Or did they get it from the school? So to that end, that's when we call in the different professionals that are able to determine to a better point if that's what the case is. So the data that Dr. Fair just shared is the data we have at hand. But there are students that are close contacts that do, that are positive. But there are stories, when we do the contact tracing, that there is a possibility, because there's somebody else who's positive that they've come across, that they could be, they could have got it from another party. So there's a number of different avenues that we can't sit here and tell you this is the absolute number and be confident that that's the right number. That's why there's uncertainty in sharing that information.
Okay, so if anything, the number would be inflated if the person didn't necessarily get it in school, but they end up testing positive?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what, math, mathematically, the number, let's say it was 5% instead of 0%. But you would still be giving a number, like, it doesn't matter where, their school number is zero. You want to be clever with, like, these numbers. Last week, I asked you, or two weeks ago, I asked you about the number of cases this year to last year. And all you said was, there was less cases last year. I said significantly less, you told me there was less. So I went and looked, last year, all of last year, 98 cases. So far today, 609 cases. Significantly less, but you won't say that. You can't just say it, you just say it's less. That's six times as high.
No, I want to be very clear. This district has been so transparent with information. We have a COVID dashboard that is up there to be transparent.
But you won't say it to me. I say it, and you won't answer me.
There were fewer cases last year, yes.
That's, that's the equivalent of saying in 2019, there were fewer cases of COVID-19, I mean, more cases.
Ms. Ryan, but in no way are we being clever with language. I want to be very clear with...
I ask you if it's less, I ask you the number of cases, and your answer is there was less cases last year. Of course there was less cases last year, we weren't testing every single person.
Ms. Ryan?
Ms. Ryan, what's the intention of the comment?
The intention is that you won't answer my question of how many cases.
Is there another question, Ms. Ryan?
No, it's not, I don't, I'm making a statement, that you will not give me an answer. I'm asking for an answer, and you won't give it to me. And that is being clever.
It's been, it's been answered.
It's been ignored, thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your thank you, though, Ms. Ryan, I do appreciate that. And that's March 7th for masking optional after that, but thank you very much. Okay. Yes, I don't see anyone else. We have a motion to close the meeting. Oh, we have something here, okay.
Just, oh, sorry, Allison Thompson, 47 Heatherland, my first time. Just shy of two years, the nation is focused on preventing hospitalization and severe disease from COVID. We have accomplished that with vaccinations and time for a less severe variant to become the dominant strain. I recognize that you two have wrestled with decisions for the last two school years that were not within your expertise, and that you likely felt like you were damned if you do and damned if you don't. I'm here to ask you to keep an open mind, as you have, and consider changing two-year-old policies before March 7th comes, specifically the close contact policy. There's pressure to have children vaccinated, even though it's well-known that kids are the lowest population. It feels like children are still being punished who aren't vaccinated by receiving close contact sentences at home, while the school allows vaccinated siblings to go to school even if their family member is sick at home with COVID. And this happened to one of my kids about last month. It's well-known that vaccinated children are getting and spreading COVID too. So I have to ask, what data are you using to justify this policy? If you don't have it, this policy should be changed to reflect that. Please stop segregating our children. You're interfering with their education and their social development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. All right. Okay, motion to close the meeting to the public.
Was there a response to her question?
I think that was, I think there was a statement, and they chose to not... Mrs. Thompson, that's fine, you have to come back to the microphone, please.
And I don't really know who to direct this to, but my question really was, what is the data that you're using to justify the policy of having unvaccinated kids go home when I know the nurses are getting calls that vaccinated siblings are now going to be at home because now they have COVID too?
Okay, thank you, thank you for clarification.
Sure.
Anyone on our administrative team want to answer the question, or?
As it pertains to the contact tracing protocols that we use, we're using the guidelines that are set forth by the Department of Health. And that's what we've been, that's what we've been doing. I understand your question along the lines of, can we reconsider and adjust? As it pertains to reconsidering and adjusting, I know that the governor said that within the next couple of weeks prior to the masking optional being in effect, there's gonna be more information. I'm not sure if he's going to, or the department is going to adjust what that criteria is. If that is adjusted, obviously, we will move forward with, obviously, putting that into our protocol and working with the team that we work with. But at this time, we're gonna continue on a path of following the protocols set forth with the Department of Health.
Okay, because I have seen neighboring towns mention that they are dropping it, and we know that other states... and we know that other states who don't operate the way that we do have already changed it. So all that I would ask is if you are given the choice, which I would expect you to get that opportunity, that you consider dropping it as well.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Hello, Allison Theodore. I'm just going to piggyback off of Mrs. Thompson's question. Just to reiterate, whatever guidance comes down from the Department of Health and the CDC is guidance, recommendations. I know a lot of towns that are in our same health department have gone against the guidance. I don't know if it's because they think it's going to change. Are you stating at this point that no matter what happens, you're not going against any guidance put out by the CDC and the New Jersey Department of Health, even though a lot of their recommendations go against things that are being recommended by doctors and things like that? I, I can speak of one in particular. I know currently our New Jersey Department of Health is suggesting that kids under a certain age get a booster, and most people would disagree with that in the medical profession.
I know that we're anticipating changes, and we're expecting updates from the Department of Health, and based on those updates, we'll make adjustments as needed. But I know that in our notification that went out regarding the decision to go mask optional, we listed those considerations that are still in place, right? We have to consider contact tracing, what that looks like for, for students who are vaccinated or not vaccinated. Does that, does all determine on what that guidance looks like moving forward that we're waiting on?
So whatever they say we are going to take as gospel, I guess is what I'm asking, or are we willing to look at that in the bigger picture and digest it and make decisions for ourselves as a Mala district?
At, at this point, we are taking what they, they give to us, and we are going to follow it at this point. I can't forecast what we're going to do in the future, but to be quite honest with you, going to a masking optional decision, I think, is a significant move forward. And along the lines of the contact tracing, I think it's very important for us to adhere to whatever the guidance is moving forward, because we feel as though the masking optional piece is a great step in the right direction.
Okay, I have to say I'm a little disheartened by hearing that, knowing what some of the suggestions I've heard other people say the New Jersey Department of Health have recommended at this time. So I, I would hope that we'd keep an open mind, unless you, of course, have privy to the knowledge of what they're going to suggest, and you know it's in accordance with what you want, to wait and see what that information is before we go hook, line, and sinker and just dive in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Theodore, for your comment. And I think it's important to note that the decisions that the administrative team are making are being made specifically for Mala and this individual district, which may be unique and different from other neighboring districts. So I think even our decision about going masking optional, I think our team waited a few days. Other districts put that out more quickly perhaps, but they are using a very thoughtful approach to all of the decision-making. So we appreciate your patience with that, and we thank you very much. All right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Do I, Ms., okay?
One more question. I forgot to ask earlier. Last week, I had, we talked about the nursing stipend. I'm just wanting to, and it was mentioned that it was similar to last year's compensation. I put in an Oprah request for their contract and any stipends. I didn't receive any of the stipends, though, from last year, so, and that went through the town, so if it's possible for me to get a copy of that.
I think Mr. Bleecker, is that, he could probably address that. Mrs. Ryan?
Ms. Ryan, the Oprah request you sent to me, and I had responded to you with the information, to satisfy the request, if there's follow-up information that you're looking for, and there's a document that I can provide or the information, please submit another Oprah request or reach out to me directly.
Well, it was in the, it was in my original. I asked for this, if they had any stipends to include that. And I, but I only got the contract.
There were several documents attached to the response that I sent you. If you only received one, then please contact me, and we'll get you the information that you requested. Any public information that I can provide, I will provide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ryan. And, all right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Do I have Ms. Sacone? Do I have a second? Mr. Copeland? All right, we are going to recess to executive session. We will not be reconvening after executive session. We will adjourn directly from executive session. Enjoy President's Day holiday. Motion to go into executive. Mr. Kizmarski, thank you. And second, I'll just make it Mr. De Silva. I think he even raised his hand, but he's thinking it. So enjoy your President's, President's Day holiday, everyone. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Kyle. I guess I could have done that.